Well, it's about 4:30, so why don't we get started? There's a lot fewer people here this time. I don't know if that's a good sign or a bad sign. You guys can decide. How's that? Well, thank you for coming. This is my second town hall meeting. I think we did our last one in February sometime. Is that right, CJ? Time's gone by rather quickly and something of a blur. So I thought I would just kind of give folks a bit of an update on what we've been up to, some of the things that we're working on, a number of the issues that are out there, and then open it up for a conversation. And I want to start out by saying, welcome to the folks in Wichita. We have some folks down at Fairway and down at Landon. I think Salina is not online. So apparently, there are folks at all those sites. If you have questions, please pipe in, and we'll try and get those addressed. So stepping back to where we started, back on February 1st. Well, there you go. February 14th was our last town hall meeting. You know, one of my goals was to really try and get out and learn more about the Medical Center as a whole and all the different aspects of the campus and with great aspirations to get out and get to all these places. I've been pretty suc-- a little bit successful in some, more successful in others. I've been to Wichita and Salina. I think I understand those better, certainly Salina a lot better than Wichita, which is more complex, but making progress there in multiple trips to Lawrence and working with the chancellor and the leadership there. I'm getting a better understanding of how Lawrence functions and the relationships between our campuses and where the opportunities and some challenges are around that. Understand Topeka a whole lot better now than I did three months ago, and that's not necessarily a good thing. But I've definitely gotten a civics lesson in the last three months, and we can talk more about that later. You know, there's still a lot of areas that I've not been able to get out to yet, and so I still plan on working on that. It is on the agenda to get out and still want to spend more time in the schools, nursing, health professions, with basic science departments in the institutes to better understand what they're doing on the ground and then even a number of facilities areas I've not been able to get to and haven't been out in the state too much other than Wichita and Salina. So still, still something to do there. But some of the things that we have been working on, the Children's Mercy integration, combined in our pediatrics programs, you've probably heard a lot about in the emails and other things, continues to gain significant momentum. There's 11 working groups that are meeting, must have met at least twice, if not three times, on various aspects of the discussions. The steering committee actually met again this morning and are really starting to get down to some of the hard questions, which is, what's this thing actually going to look like when between childrens and us and what are the possibilities and how are we going to take that forward? But certainly is gaining momentum there. The integration talks between the hospital, the UKP, and the university likewise have gained significant momentum. There's a number of working groups there that I think have largely done the majority of their work. Where we're at right now is trying to ultimately resolve what the model's going to look like at the top in terms of how the board will look for this structure overall and then how it relates to the practice plan. And as we've gotten into it, we've started to enter, discovered some legal challenges that we had not anticipated as we started to design it. A lot of those legal challenges are around the fact that we're dealing with a statutorily created entity, the Hospital Authority Board, and it is, it does not have much latitude in a number of things that it can do. And that really is actually a significant barrier for us that we're trying to work around and, you know, work through. But actually, a lot of momentum there and I think building pressure to do so as a number of changes, both federally and at the state level, are coming down financially, a lot of pressure to get this figured out and move forward with it. Did have a chance to meet with a number of different groups. The nursing, external advisory board for nursing, we had a great lunch and it was great to meet a number of those people and even one of the folks who's on the phone I got to meet for graduations. So with Paige Geiger, that was a lot of fun and get a much better understanding of Karen's leadership group or advisory group for the school of nursing. The research institute, I'm now on the board for that and spend a lot of time, been spending more time with Greg than I have in years. So it's certainly a much better understanding of that organization as it continues to grow and reorganize a bit and deal with the growing research enterprise, not just on this campus, but with our collaborators around town through the CTSA and et cetera. So that's a critically important group for us. And that board actually has a number of outside people on it. People may not realize that, but that is not just a KU board. It actually has multiple external advisory people or external members as well. The Far Above Campaign is a very big organization. That's the fundraising campaign for KU overall, has a huge, has a large steering committee, but a huge organization around it that really touches all 50 states and I think 11 countries at this point that are reaching out to and formalizing the process to continue the campaign. We're about 50% of the way there already, so we're making progress on that. But working with that, the piece for this campus is about a $300 million piece of that drive, and that's both for the hospital and the medical center. So we have committees underneath that that are working on various aspects of it, and it's making progress. The whole committee will get together actually for the first time in the fall in September. Met with both our advancement board for the medical center. We've had a meeting of the full board and we just had a steering committee, an executive committee meeting, and subsequently a new member orientation this week, as a matter of fact, for that committee, which is an outstanding organization. And its community leaders, both sides of the state line, but largely Kansas City and largely focused on, or exclusively focused on, the medical center and was critical in our success at raising funds for NCI and a number of other things. One of the big areas of focus coming up will be around the neurosciences initiatives, and so we're educating that board and getting them up to speed. Likewise, had a chance to meet with the For Wichita Board, which is a similar board but for Wichita campus specifically, and its Wichita community leaders around that. And that group has been fairly successful. It raised about $4 million to initiate the kickoff of the four-year program in Wichita. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to meet with them in person because that was one of the days where we had one of the big snowstorms, so did so by conference call. But that group remains very engaged and actually very engaged in, both do actually, for advocacy for us as we've been going through our political trials and tribulations this spring as well. Roy had his external advisory board for the cancer center in, which is their first time in since we had our designation and both for input on where we are, the progress that we've made, but also the things that would have to be accomplished just to maintain our NCI designation, plus what it would take to go on to comprehensive designation. And had a chance to have a closed-door session with them as well, and that's certainly very informative, and I think that work is really just starting to ramp up. And if you'd like, Roy can come on, comment on that later. And then now in this position, I also sit on the Hospital Authority Board, the full board, but also a number of the committees. And our, the quality committee specifically has really ramped up recently and taken on a more, I think, important role, looking at quality issues across the enterprise and not, not just within the hospital exclusively. But that body obviously deals with everything right now related to the hospital, but it's also a big part of these discussions around integration. So it's a very engaged group of people. Actually, it's a very talented group of people, and it's good to know we got them on our side. One of my concerns or one of my areas of focus coming into this position was to try and enhance governance on this campus. And I think we had heard from a number of people through the process over the last few years that, that we had some challenges around faculty governance in particular. We've had a chance to meet with the School of Medicine Faculty Council as well as the leaders for faculty assembly, and then subsequently, we, just a few weeks ago, had a faculty assembly meeting and started those conversations of how we can engage those groups to, I think the committees worked quite well, but how do we really overall get them to be more engaged at the institutional level and helping to make institutional decisions and directions and strategic planning? So it was good to meet with them and understand and share my vision for them. So we're starting some work to figure out how, how we can make this more effective. And then working with the students as well. Met, worked with the School of Medicine Student Council, but then the Student Governing Council altogether, which is the students from all the schools together, which is actually a great group, very engaged. Vincent Alfredo's done a great job working with them and organizing them, but really also enabling them to, to take on a number of tasks, and they really, really have taken on a number of things, really drove some issues around what student fee increases were, what they're going to be used for. They increased their own fees by their choice to support a number of student services and other things, and they've really gotten excited and gotten engaged, and I think that's real Some other things, not so much internal, that we've been working on over the last few months, have made a number of trips to the Board of Regents in Topeka for their meetings. As you recall, the Board of Regents sits over all the region institutions, from the technical colleges, the community colleges, the state colleges, and up to the universities. All report to the Board of Regents. And they oversee really all our activities. They also set standards forth and they require of us putting forth performance improvement projects that we report back to them on a regular basis as an institution and have really in the last year or two changed that process and wanted to become much more involved and put much more, or a number of stretch goals out there for organizations, but then also actually advocate for us pretty significantly in Topeka as well. And so that's, that's been an important group to get to know and work with, and they really are very much on our side through all, through all these issues that we're having. The Midwest Cancer Alliance is, is part of the Cancer Center organization. It's our outreach piece of that. There are now 20 hospitals that are part of that, Roy, and then there's a partners advisory board, which are really the key element of that, and we had that meeting recently. There's a new chair of that group, Robert Moran, who's terrific and is obviously taking that role with Gusto and really wants to be a big advocate for that, and is going to do a great job. And then I've had a chance to go around and meet a number of our partners, predominantly the community with KCU and B. How many of you have ever been over to that campus? I've got about four or five, pretty good. Actually, it's interesting, their, their main administration building is the old Children's Mercy Hospital. I didn't realize that until I, until I went over to visit, and they've done a nice job of rehabilitating that. But spent some time with, with their leadership, which actually is in transition. Their temporary or interim president right now, actually is ENT guy from, from Wichita, which I've known for years. I just didn't realize he was the interim president over there. So I think there's some opportunities for collaboration with them going forward, and I think they can be some good partners in a number of ways for us. Spent some time with Betty Dries, the dean over at UMKC, looking at in part how this children's integration discussion might affect them, but also how we as medical schools can, can work together. We already have a number of educational research programs between our institutions, but there's certainly additional opportunities there. And with Truman Medical Center being one of their primary teaching sites, have met both with John Bluford, the CEO, and Mark McPhee, who is their new senior vice president of clinical operations or something to that effect. But Mark is a physician. He used to be the chief medical officer over at St. Luke's for a number of years before going to the Cleveland Clinic and then, actually, the Cleveland Clinic went up and set up a hospital in Abu Dhabi for them for three years and has just come back to Kansas City and is leading the clinical enterprise for the Truman folks and has some really creative ideas, and I think there's some opportunities there for us also. Have had a chance to visit with both Hugh Tappan, CEO down at Wesley, and his team, as well as Jeff Korsmos, the VIA Christi person down in Wichita. They're obviously undergoing a lot of changes right now. VIA Christi just put out a message saying they're doing some pretty dramatic cuts within their system, trying to deal with the changes down there also. So everybody's dealing with a lot of change right now, and I think we're all going to have to be pretty creative about how we think about collaborating together to meet all our missions in what's going to be a relatively challenging environment going forward. Getting back to the Topeka piece, I did buy a K-Tag after about my fifth trip to Topeka. The single best thing to come out of that. But have met with a number of the different committees, the House Education Budget Committee, the Senate Committee on Health and Welfare, the Joint House and Senate Public Health Committees, House Health and Human Services Committee. They all have the same names. I don't really know why they have all these different committees. And then, as many of you probably saw, Governor Brownback visited the campus in April, really during the break, in support of higher education, and then also visited our Salina campus and when he was making the rounds, had a chance to visit with him on both those occasions. And then really over the course of the session, have met one-on-one with a significant number of both senators and legislators, trying to help educate a lot of them what we are, what it is we do here. We're a very, very foreign place to most people and certainly true when you have 45% new folks in Topeka, that they just don't understand us. And so I've spent a lot of time trying to help educate them and help them understand what it is that we do for the state and what our current environment is. So flipping it back to where we started this session budget-wise, which is what's on everybody's mind, where the governor started out was a flat budget for higher education. And also in that, he had a $10 million ask to support the first phase of the health education building initiative on this campus. What we concluded the first half of the session with, when the legislature went on break, was a house budget that had a 4% cut, salary cap piece of it, which because of the way that math works, is huge for us, was, for our campus, proved to be over $5 million. A sweep of vacant positions, also because we're somewhat unique in how we structure between research dollars and everything else. Their definition of vacant positions amounted to another couple million dollars, so just over 10% cut really for this campus should the house budget go into effect. And then it was about another $9 million on the Lawrence campus, so a pretty significant hit to the University of Kansas as a whole and disproportionately so compared to other regents institutions. The, in the, the Board of Regents asked the chancellor to come and present, and I'll show you in a second what, what would happen should that level of cuts go into effect, and that, that's what made it into a lot of the press. And what, the message we tried to carry apart was to set the stage of where we've been. You remember, we've all been here. So since 2008, when the market took a downturn and the state revenues started dropping, we've, we've taken an over 13% cut in that period of time since 2008. So that's where we start today from, already down 13% over the last five years. And, and in the face of that, have gotten NCI designation, have opened Wichita, have opened Salina, have, you know, school nursing has created these relationships with 19 community colleges, and we've done a remarkable number of things in the face of what was a over 13% cut in that period of time. But certainly, we've, I think, gotten meaner, we've gotten leaner, we've, we've leveraged ourselves pretty effectively with private dollars, KBA dollars, and all other sources of funding to, to get the most we can out of the place. So that's kind of what we've had to do to get to this point, so obviously anything above beyond that was going to be significant. So the legislature went on break and the chancellor went to the Board of Regents and said, you know, if we're really looking at over 10% cut across the organization, these are really just the med center aspects of it that we discussed, it was going to be really challenging for us to, to maintain both Wichita and Salina, having already leveraged ourselves pretty significantly and leveraged those communities very significantly. For example, the Salina campus, that, you know, about 70% of that budget had been provided by local dollars to get it up and running. That's not a sustainable model, but that's what we did to get it up and running, and they're very proud of that. They should be. And then to, you know, we were going to have to, if you cut the GME budget by 10%, you're looking at 30 resident slots on both campuses, together with both campuses. You know, and the school of nursing, since largely their dollars are essentially in faculty and it takes faculty to teach, with one form or another, we're going to lose students there. And certainly, the cancer center funding, some of that comes out of the overall, a significant part of it comes out of the overall budget to the, to the institution, in addition to the $5 million that is a line item to the cancer center, and that's been at risk pretty significantly on and off throughout this whole session. So, so really, the potential impacts were pretty significant. That was a message that we shared, got a lot of attention, got a lot of press, got a lot of hate mail. And, but when you explain it to people, for the climate that we're in, where we've been, they don't like it, but they get it. And then, as I mentioned, Governor Brownback started his, his tour, and he visited every one of the higher, of the regents institutions actually over the course of the break and ended up with Salina being the last visit, but did manage to hit all those to enforce his vision of the importance of higher education to the economy of the state and the necessity to try and maintain that. One made the legislature reconvene, and I don't think the full sessions, the full sessions met for more than 15 minutes at a time? Yeah. So almost all of the work since, since May 8th has been in committees, very small groups of people trying to hammer out negotiations. They're all there, but most of them actually are not really doing very much because it's all behind closed doors at this point. And where we think it is today is, is here, which is, it looks like between the Senate and the House, the governor's not weighed in on this to my knowledge. The governor has to actually sign everything. But what it sounds like is coming out of that is a 1.5% cut to higher education this year, another 1.5% next year. And then, again, very important to us is maintaining the salary cap component of that. They cut it in half, but it's still for us a fairly significant amount of money, at $2.5 million. And then it sounds like somewhere in there, they included $1 million for us to start planning for our health education building. It's not clear if that's actually of our deferred maintenance fund or not, or if that's real dollars. I haven't gotten clarification on that. It does stipulate in some way, shape, or form, actually, it stipulates that we cannot close Wichita or Salina. It's not clear to me if it says we can't cut Wichita or Salina as, as part of our overall budgets, and so we need to understand that, that better. That's all happening as we speak. I mean, it's, this is pretty dynamic right now. It certainly does not look like the governor's budget, however. And so we certainly are going to have some work cut out for us if this is in fact how it plays out coming forward. So back to my original three promises, when we started out February 1st, really addressing the healthcare workforce. You know, on the good news side is we had a great weekend of graduations, starting Friday and finishing Sunday, and I had the opportunity to participate in six of those graduation ceremonies, and it was really, it's always really fun to see the kids graduate and head off to their careers and all fired up and their families are very excited. It's, it's a wonderful time, and it reminds you of why we're actually in this business. So that was good. Perhaps not so good stuff is it's still unclear how we're going to fund our education building. And it's still unclear entirely how these cuts are going to play out, if in fact they come, and how we're going to address those. So I think probably within two weeks, we should know really where we're going to be. And then we're going to have to get folks together and start mapping out how we're going to address the, the challenges of the buts, of the budget cuts as they've been proposed, see what we can handle with, you know, one-time money, see what we need to handle in the, you know, the problem is we, it starts July 1st, so we don't have a whole lot of time to think about this. But it looks like we're going to have some work to do. Going back to promise number two, which is to increase our rankings, is just what's happened in the last couple of months as 2014 data has come forward. We've largely held our own for the most part, not, not down too much. In primary care, for public universities, we're still at number 25. We slipped a little in the primary care for all schools, but really only because a couple of the ties got broken and it shakes it out. And really, in research is the same thing. We pretty much held our own, and then with, with the tiebreaker, we technically slipped a little, but that's kind of, we were tied with all the same people. So that's, we're still starting from about the same place despite recognizing what's happening to the federal budget, the NIH, and everything else. And so when we look at our research and our national, being a national leader in biomedical research, obviously, the sequestration is a problem. We've already started to feel that in the amounts of our awards, and it's clear that the number of grants, and I don't know if we have a percentage across the board, a number of, percentage of grants that they're going to be funding fewer of going forward. Paul, do you have a number on that? Or, yeah, I think they're still trying to figure that out, but we know nonetheless, competition for dollars is going to get a lot tougher. And just kind of year-to-date, last year to this year, last year, we had almost $40 million in new grants, and this year, we're at about 16, you know, year-to-date for the same period of time. Having said that, we've gotten some really fairly impressive grants. These are just the ones that are over $1 million in that period of time. So we are still, still doing quite well with some just terrific grants, but it's clear that life's going to get tougher for all of us. So my priorities for the summer, in addition to making it out to, to visit more of you and understand better what it is you do every day. Obviously, LCME is looming large at this point, and Glenn's not here because he's probably locked in his office somewhere, working on this. And I just want to emphasize, we do have the School of Medicine Education Faculty Retreat in August, and obviously, that's right before the LCME visit, and that's going to be critical for people to get out there to this retreat. Most of it's going to be centered around preparation for LCME and particularly anybody who very likely is going to be talking to a site reviewer needs to be at this. So if you can get it on your calendars, get it on your department calendars, so that at least the key people for your departments can, can attend that August 16th retreat, half-day retreat on a Friday. It'll be very helpful. We have a consulting firm coming in September 9th through 11th to do a mock site visit, and they are going to visit all three campuses, which is why it's a three-day event. So they'll be in Kansas City, they'll go to Salina, and they'll go to Wichita. And out of that, and that's within about six or seven weeks of the actual site visit. That helps everybody experience it and can they give us feedback on where we did well and what, what we said that we shouldn't have said, those sorts of things. But it also, they will give us feedback on how they really feel like the whole, our whole preparedness was overall and things that we'd get with not too much time to work on it, but a few, but a little bit of time to work on it before the actual site visit in October. And what we will be developing for the faculty retreat in August is really a series of talking points for faculty that are just kind of the highlights that if you happen to run into a site visitor walking down the hallway, you'll, you'll know the basics at least, that you can talk intelligently about it and hopefully, hopefully wander on without, without too much trouble with the visit from a site viewer. So we will be working on that, and we'll try to get that out to all the faculty as well. Continuing to work on our integration initiatives, like I said, we're actually getting quite a bit of momentum going, both around the pediatrics one, but probably more so around the clinical integration piece. And certainly, our goal was to have by around July, in both actually, enough of a structure to be able to work on actual agreements. I think we're more likely to make that on the clinical integration side than the ped side, but, but we are making great progress on those, and that's taken a huge amount of people's time, and so thank you, everybody, for, who's working on both of those. And then we have a number of searches going on. As you know, we, we did kick off the executive dean search for the School of Medicine. That committee's met once. We have a search firm that's helping with this, with that. We have a small executive committee of three folks that are kind of vetting the 40 or 50 applications that they have. They have narrowed that down to 15 or 17, something like that. The whole committee, I think, has a meeting coming up in about a week, actually, to, to go through all those, and then interviews will be starting after that. So that, that one's moving along pretty well. We are, we have formed Brent Thrasher's chair in a committee for, to start a search for Department of Surgery. Jim Thomas is going to be retiring this year, very well-deserved. It's 70-plus years old, has done in 40 years at KU. So, but, but wanted to get that process going, he wanted to get that process going while he was still here, so there would be, be a fairly good transition around that. My old job, the ENT chair search, we need to get up and running. That committee's actually forming up now. We'll stagger a little bit with the other two, but hopefully, we'll be kicking off in June and July to get that one going. We have a couple others within the organization. You probably all saw that, I think the announcement went out, that Alan Rowitch is going to be stepping down in June after many years as our vice chancellor for academic affairs. And that's a very big job, and so we will be opening that position up and looking for a replacement for Alan through that, and sort of integral to that is director for international programs. And there are multiple elements to that actual position, some of, and traditionally, that sat within academic affairs, but a very big piece of that is really student-oriented, and so that's probably going to, or it is going to have dual reporting to academic affairs and student affairs, because a very big piece of that is our students' experience going out globally and doing international rotations and, and so that will be a big piece of that job. And that position is, Karen, open, opening? Excellent. And that committee's formed. All right. So it's coming right along, and that's great. We also have a transition going in our community engagement office. You, I'm sure, saw the emails of Dave Cook, who's run that program in the Institute for Community Engagement and Outreach. For the last several years, just took the job as vice chancellor for the Edwards campus. So Dave's relocated down the street a little ways, which is actually pretty exciting for us because it really creates a lot of easy opportunities for collaboration between our organizations. We've already had some We've already had some meetings about developing a healthcare MBA and association with school business down there and here, and a number of other things. So, I think there's some real opportunities out of that. But Dave leaves a pretty big hole, as he had a man of many talents, and really oversaw a lot of different operations. And so, I want to thank Ryan Spaulding for agreeing to step into those, those many, many shoes. Ryan has run our telemedicine program for a long time, done a great job with that, and grown research funding in that organization. But also, has a health policy background, is stepping into Dave's role on an interim basis, and likely will be an interim basis for a little while. I told him six months, but I'm hoping he's not holding me to that too tightly, until we kind of, get our dean search taken care of, and get ourselves reorganized a little bit, and we'll figure out where we're going with that one. So, that's what I've got. What do you guys have, question-wise? I wish I could. This is, and I'm probably not even the best one to explain it. Barb, you want to take a shot at it, or Stephanie, you want to take a shot at it? Both of you have had to work with it a lot.
Would you mind repeating the question for us?
Yeah, absolutely. The question is, what is the salary cap component of the budget, how's it calculated? What's it made up of? I don't think that's on, hang on. Stephanie Webb's going to take a shot at this one for us, if we get a microphone to work. It has to do with your budgets versus your actuals.
Well, yeah, I know what they're doing and why, the term is the problem. Salary cap doesn't make any sense to me, in, you know, the context of what they're doing. Yeah. The situation is that they have taken a look at a snapshot of the salary spending that we had as of a point in time, and I don't remember the date. It seems like it might have been back in April. And then, just did a straight-line projection through to the end of the fiscal year to determine how much they think that we will have spent of our salary budget by then. And then, what they did, and it's not just for us, it's for all state agencies, any amount that you spent above the salary budget that you had, or any amount that you underspent your salary budget by, will be cut.
Based off projections?
Based on, based on projections. It's really hard for us, because it's been a strategy in some areas to kind of preserve some of those dollars, because, well, for lots and lots of reasons. And in some areas, there's been a mandatory hiring delay, or not mandatory, but just in practice, people have sort of sometimes delayed filling a position in order to accrue some savings that they could use and accumulate as reserves to hedge against potential cuts. Or, you know, in the case of the institution, this sort of gets to the idea of shrinkage. There's a certain amount of our budget that we're not allowed to spend, because we have to meet shrinkage, but, and we always do meet our shrinkage by having positions that remain vacant, for whatever reason. Maybe we didn't get the recruitment done as fast as we thought, or maybe somebody quit unexpectedly, and positions just remain vacant. Well, to the extent that we have excess shrinkage dollars available, that goes into our institution's, what we call, one-time reserves. And we can use those monies if we have an unexpected disaster in one of our buildings, a flood or something that we need to pay to recover from, just any number of things. But we actually count on having that money. Well, so the problem is, we have not hit our exact salary budget. We didn't overspend it, but we have underspent. And so, the extent to which they project, and the other thing is, sometimes people wait to see how things are going to play out, and departments will do some retro, or schools will do some retroactive funding adjustments in order to then spend up their budget. But they took a look, sometime in April, I believe it was, did that straight-line projection, and determined that we're going to be under by X number of dollars, and that they would just take that.
No.
The term doesn't make any sense. Salary cap.
But there's also a vacant position.
And so, I think they're double-dipping on us. That's the thing that worries me, too, is that.
Right. It's double-dipping.
So, did they answer the question? Do people know? The term doesn't make any sense.
So, it's not really tied to what actually salaries are, to Karen's point, and whether your salary is high or low. It's not related to that at all. It's whether you, as an institution or an organization, have spent your salary budget completely, or interestingly, if you overspent your budget, they cut that amount as well.
Right, under or over.
I'm not quite sure what the logic is around that one, but.
Yeah, so they're, they're saying you're not allowed to overspend, and so, the cap maybe makes some sense in that regard. But to have underspent it being a problem, cap doesn't really seem to make any sense. That's like Priscilla told me earlier, it's equating a floor and a ceiling as being the same thing. And anyway, that's the answer.
A trick. Dr. Jensen? Thank you, Stephanie.
Well, I, I think you could solve this whole thing if you'd just cut me a check for $2.65 million, and then, we'd have no salary cut, right?
Unfortunately, we needed to do it before they did the calculation, because they've already done the calculation. Yes, that's, that's a good point. Any other questions, thoughts, comments? Wichita, you guys have anything? Silence. Yes?
Is the stem cell initiative still in play?
It is in play. I haven't heard that it's been funded for sure or not. It has been, we were checking on that today. So, it has been funded. Yes, excuse me. Yes, it's been funded.
Are we happy?
Well, it's $1.2 million that we didn't have.
Restrictive, though, isn't it?
It is, but you know, it's restricted in things that we're already doing. So, it, so it will potentially offset some other costs in that, and there are some things that we need to do in addition, that we'll have to use those dollars for. But it, for example, built into that are monies for building a lab, which we were already doing. So, so it frees up the dollars that we were using for that. So, so there's some offset there, for sure. And, you know, it's an important area of research, and it's not going to advance us very far with that kind of money. When you look at some of the other institutions around the country, California put $3 billion into stem cell research, and have a Nobel Prize to show for it. But, you know, it's, it's going to help us make some progress. Stephanie, one more time. And then, we got another one down front.
I'm just wondering, what so far is the best thing about the job for you? And also, what you see as sort of the, what you're most optimistic about when you think about the future of our medical center?
People and people. Hands-down, the best thing about the job is just the great people we have at KU, and their commitment to what it is we do every day. And that includes the students, includes the staff, includes, obviously, all the faculty as well, and includes our partners. And so, that's also our best opportunity. I mean, we face a lot of challenges. Most of those challenges are not any different than anybody else is facing right now. You can go to any institution you want to in the country, and they're having exactly these same conversations. Dynamics may be slightly different, particularly at the, at the state level, but the federal challenges are certainly the same for all of us. And we're going to have to get much, much better at our collaborations and our partnerships, and our sharing, if you will, to be effective and to be, be successful in the future. And yet, I think we have great partners to do that. So, I'm also, that's, I guess, where my optimism comes from.
Hi, I'm Matt Shute. I guess my question is.
I've seen your name a million times, Matt. It's great to have a face.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I've done some work with the ECG consultants, just from a data perspective, and some things like that. So, I guess I wanted to know what your take is on the, you know, the medical education models that they're working with now? I don't know what kind of progress has been made on that, or what's going to happen going forward with that.
Yeah, that's, that's great, Matt, for, thanks for bringing that up. We didn't really get into that on this. You know, of the many initiatives, and perhaps many ECG initiatives we have going on, one of those is a financial one on this campus that had multiple facets to it. The first was, was just getting to a point that we could understand our finances, meaning really get to have a, a finance sheet and be able to understand what our bottom line was, given all our many different resources and places that we both have money and spend money. That, that was a pretty big project, and required huge enterprise analytics effort to do that. But then, on top of that, trying to get to making sure that we're funding what we should be funding, meaning funding our core missions in education, and research, faculty support, and the clinical enterprise. But that the, each element should be funding itself in particular. Our goal through clinical integration is to make sure that clinical funds clinical, and that we get that piece taken care of. The counterpart to that is, we got to do the same thing. We have to fund education. And, and so, there's been an aggressive model going on, started within the School of Medicine, but it's starting to play out into the other schools as well, and the other sites, is putting a model together of what does it really cost us to provide the education that we provide, in all our, of all our students, not just medical students, but all our students. And then, and then putting a rational model together to pay for that. And then, ultimately, we need to get to the point that we implement that, so that we are paying our educators to do the job that we're asking them to do, that we're not subsidizing that by some other mechanism. And then, around the, the research side, putting a coherent, both faculty compensation plan, but also a bridging plan together. So, again, that we can rationally fund our core missions and do it in a way that we all understand how we're doing it, which makes it much easier to stand how to make changes going forward. So, just trying to put some rationality to it all. I think it's actually close. I mean, there's been a lot of work done on the education model. Some work done on the research piece that's, that's coming together as well. Ultimately, we'll have a model that, that kind of covers all our missions. Then, getting there is another matter. And quite frankly, I don't think we can get there until we get the clinical integration piece done, because that then starts freeing up the dollars to let the rest of it start flowing through the system, so we can, we can fund everything we need to do. But right now, for example, we have, have a lot of money tied up in GME education that will go to the hospital, and that allows dollars then to use for other kinds of education in our system. And so, it really will let us get to a point of knowing what it costs us to do things. And when somebody walks in and says, "I want to start a PhD program in X," we know what the cost is for that. And then, we know we have to pay it if we're going to do it. And so, those are rational decisions you can make at that point in time. And you can, you can understand how you're going to do it. Or if you find yourself in a situation of not having the same amount of dollars, what are you going to say by not doing something else? I mean, you know, you have to know what it's costing you before you can really make logical decisions. And that's, we've always been challenged to do that, because we haven't really always done things rationally, we've done them historically. So, thanks for all your work on that. It's been a huge amount of work, huge amount of data. It's still getting tweaked still, but I think it's getting close. And so, as, as that gets closer, in the not very distant future, we'll start rolling out elements of that for discussion. I mean, a lot of people involved in various aspects of it all along the way, but we'll want to start sharing those, and what that looks like. And again, that's what we'll ultimately want to get to. How soon can we get there? That'll have a lot to do with all these other things that are going on, but it'll give us a target. Thank you. Good question. But do you have anything they want to share with us? What's some good news? Oh, come on. Sharon Lynch got her Hilton grant today. That was great. The Hilton Foundation is going to fund her multiple sclerosis project for, gosh, is it five years or 10 years? It's actually a fairly extensive grant. And I thought it had multiple renewing pieces to it. At any rate, it's a, that's a great thing. And that actually, that program would be going in the building down the hill on Rainbow, the old school down there. Can you use the mic? Thanks, Karen.
We're reconfiguring classrooms in this building, if people don't know. We've released some room on the fourth floor of this building that's been made into a classroom, because nursing students and others were using Battenfeld for classes, and that wasn't very helpful, because of the sound system in there is not good for classes. So, we've done that, and that's working. The students are really, really happy there. And then, in this building, in the basement, we have some classrooms. And they were traditional classrooms that were set up like this. And they are going to be reconfigured, so that we can make them flat and have tables with chairs around them. And facilities and construction have done a wonderful job at making that happen. And, and that is to accommodate a new way of doing curriculum in the nursing school for undergraduates. We're going to be doing similar things for medicine going forward, because the future is small group classes, interprofessional groups of people. But you need different kind of space for that. And so, that's been very successful from the students' and faculty's point of view.
Terrific.
So, thank you, Stephanie, et al.
All right. Nobody has anything else? Thank you very much for coming out. Thanks for all your help and your support on all these many, many, many initiatives. Thank you.